I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, my nation and my land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, item number one on our agenda this morning is recognizing Gary Eddy upon his retirement from the Assessor's Clerk Recorder Office for thirty-six years of service to the county. So, I believe Tim Mathis is gonna say a few words.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Council, Mr. Russo. My name is Tim Mathis, I'm the Assistant Assessor, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Hill, who regrettably was unable to attend today. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Gary Eddy, who has been with the Assessor's Office for thirty-six and a half years. Gary started with the office on November eighteenth, nineteen seventy-four, as an Appraiser I, and worked his way up to the position of an Appraiser IV. The portrait of many county, city, state, and federal workers being portrayed in the media right now is not pretty. I can assure you that Gary is the antithesis of that image. I was his immediate supervisor for five years, and can personally, and personal friend for twenty-three, and can personally attest to his work ethic and outstanding character. I have often said this, and will say it again, his work was and is the gold standard upon which all other residential, excuse me, appraisal work could be compared to. He was a perfectionist, and took great pride in his work in turning out the best product possible. As a supervisor, Gary had a great impact on those around him, and he mentored many people along the way. The appraisal training that Gary provided created the foundation for success not only for the employee, but for the office as well. This is yet another tremendous loss of institutional knowledge for the Assessor's Office. Gary will be greatly missed by all, especially me, and we wish we could convince him to change his mind, but he won't do it. But, we wish him well, and we wish him the best in his well-deserved retirement. And I'd like to present to you, Mr. Chairman, or Supervisor Cox, Mr. Gary Eddy.
I'm gonna try to project, instead of using this, if that's okay. I'm jealous for two reasons. One, you get retired, and two, you look like you're about four years old. So, I was still in high school, it's rare that we get to say what Supervisor Vanderpool gets to say, but I was in high school when you started with the county, and I didn't even know appraisers existed back then. So, on behalf of the county, we get to present you today with the county seal, which is the highest honor that we can bestow upon any one of our employees, and you've gotta have at least thirty years of service to do it, and you well surpass that. So, congratulations on your many years of, thirty-six years, I don't know how you did that, because I know some of the people in the, in that office. But, congratulations, and we're excited for you, and hope you have plans for this time off. And let's, we're gonna put you in the monthly newsletter, so.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. This has been an emotional time for me, it's like, as my office well knows, they had presented me with a going-away gift, the day that I, my last day of work, and I told Tim, whatever you do, don't bring anybody to my desk, because I don't think I'm gonna be able to handle that. Well, about eight-thirty in the morning, I had a large grouping of people around my desk, and of course, I cried like a baby. And I finally posed myself, and thanked everybody, but I want to say that it's been an honor working for Tulare County. This thirty-six and a half years has gone by so fast, it's unbelievable. My first job out of college lasted about six months, I hated it, and I took this job with the county, thinking that perhaps I would be here for maybe a year or so, and as it turns out, that wasn't the case. But, I can honestly say, after thirty-six and a half years, I still enjoy going to work every day. I worked with such an incredible staff, it was like, like family, and I miss everybody terribly, but I'm enjoying retirement, so. It's a major plus there, but again, I just want to thank Tulare County, and I want to thank the Assessor's Office for such an incredible group of people, it truly has been family, and I'm gonna miss everybody very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know, when I left the car business, it was the same deal, I didn't miss the business as much as I missed the people, and so, people's what makes a business, and people's what makes a county, so, thank you very much.
Well, sure, I just wanted to say, it's that damn retirement system. You know, and I can't speak for Mr. Eddy, but I, I know how much we appreciate your efforts on behalf of the Assessor's Office, and for the people of Tulare County. Obviously, you provide a very valuable service to many, many people, and oftentimes, behind the scenes, I'm sure they had no idea who you were, and what you were doing, but you knew what you were doing, and you know the impact you were having on the people of Tulare County, and it was very positive. We wish you well in your retirement, and you don't have to stop being a family member to the folks that you've worked with, I'm sure they'd love to have you come by and see them once in a while, too, so, thank you so much for being here this morning.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your service and years of service at Tulare County. Okay, let's move on to item number two, proclaim April twelfth, two thousand and eleven as Adult Literacy Day in Tulare County, Mr. Brian Lewis.
Morning, Board, thank you. This is one of my favorite times of years, when we get to recognize our literacy program, the wonderful staff, and the wonderful volunteers throughout the county that make it possible, and they get a chance to come up and tell you folks some of the wonderful things that we're doing with not only your money, but with some state money, that we will probably lose if the governor gets his way, but we're trying to keep that from happening, but nonetheless, we will continue our literacy program, we're doing too many good things to let a little bit of funding get in the way. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Pat Hoppick, who is our wonderful literacy coordinator, without whom this could not be taking place. Pat?
Hi there.
Morning.
It's me again, thanks for letting us come back. Mr. Eddy, I'm right behind you. Three hundred and forty-four days, I think, and then I retire. So, this is my last visit to come visit you. We're, we've been doing some great things this year with our literacy program, ninety-one customers, a hundred and three tutors, all over the county, we celebrated this year some eight GEDs, right now, we have forty-three people working on their GEDs, and nineteen driver's licenses, twenty-one new jobs, and we brought with us today our newest US citizen, and you'll get to meet her here in just a minute. I think Mr. Lewis gave you all an invitation to our annual Tutor Learner Conference, Supervisor Cox has been kind enough to join us the last couple of years, you're certainly welcome to come on Farty the thirteenth of May, to celebrate Let's Roll, and that's our theme this year for our conference at Three Rivers, we have some great workshops planned, and we eat. I have a special message for Supervisor Cox from Javier Mendoza, who joined us last year, and I think he made mention that he was gonna get his GED and go to the Fire Academy, so if I threatened him again to burn his house down, he'd have his, he got his GED, and he's now finished the Fire Academy, and so I didn't have to burn his house down. But, he said, be sure and let you know that that all worked out. We're celebrating partnerships this year like we've never celebrated before, Visaya Rescue Mission, the Sheriff's Department, although we are going to have to terminate our Jailhouse Rocks program this year because of our funding. Our newest partner, COS, College of Sequoias, Kevin McCusker is their PR guru, and he's one of our new tutors, he's helping us make some inroads with COS and our new Transitional Literacy Program that we're doing, and Health and Human Services Karen Hanson, without whom we couldn't exist, and Karen's here in the audience that cheers on today. And we'll recognize one of the Health and Human Services counselors again today, out on the front, your front steps, that would be Heather Friedas, we always celebrate the people who send us the most referrals, that actually stay with us and do something cool, you're gonna meet one of those customers today, too. Let me introduce you, our newest US citizen, Malai Black.
Hi, Your Honors, my name is Malai Black, I got my citizen yesterday, I'm, I'm just so proud, and I want to vote, I always want that, so, I, I'm just too proud, so, I don't know what else to say, so, I'm not used to.
Don't leave.
Thank you.
You know, it's a great thing to become an American citizen, most of us have that privilege from birth, but to those who have gone through the special effort to immigrate to this country, and then to go through the process of becoming a citizen, it's a tremendous accomplishment, and we're proud of you, as you are proud of yourself, and on behalf of Board's Supervisors, my privilege to present you with this American flag.
Thank you, sir. Malai has been with our team for ten years, she came to us, she didn't read or write English, and she was scared to death, and now she reads and writes English, she's working on her GED, and she's still scared to death. I mentioned our partnership with Health and Human Services, and again, Karen Hanson and I, when we had a lucid moment, we set and dreamed up this partnership, that's just been tremendous, in helping some of the Human Services referrals meet their goals. Liz Benavente Mendoza, she just got married, she just told me that, is gonna tell you a little about her journey.
Right now, I'm on my way to receiving my GED, the Literacy Center is what's making it happen, they helped me so much already by passing three out of five GED tests. The staff is a great group of wonderful people helping others in need. My tutor, Jo Slavin, is an amazing and smart person, every Tuesday, she picks me up at home and drops me off, if it wasn't for the Literacy Center, I wouldn't be where I'm at today. I've tried other places to earn my GED, but it never worked out, I finally found the right place to help me reach my goal, and hopefully help others, thank you.
I'd be remiss in not recognizing, as Supervisor Cox always does, our tutors and learners in the audience, I think we only have one other learner with us, and that would be Amber Snowden, she's sitting behind me, and we have at least a dozen of our tutors who took time out today to come and see us. So, without bothering any further, I thank you for all of your support, and especially Supervisor Cox, for showing up when there's other things to do, and we appreciate that. And next year, I'm sure that Brian will bring somebody over equally or better qualified than me to run the program, and introduce you to them at that time. Thank you.
On behalf of the county of Tulare, we'd like to give you this proclamation, declaring Tuesday, April twelfth, two thousand and eleven as Adult Literacy Day in Tulare County, and Tulare County feels the success of the Adult Literacy Program within Tulare County, and wishes to commend and public acknowledge the efforts of the program administrators, volunteers, tutors, learners, and the future endeavors. That's signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Thank you.
I doubt that'll find another hard-working, tall German to be as good as a person as Pat, she's been absolutely wonderful, so, thank you very much, Board.
Thank you, Brian, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to make mention, I don't know, I don't wanna cut anyone off if they wanna say anything, but this is an action item, and before I move approval, I think it's appropriate that we recognize the tutors that helped make this program possible, so I'd like to give them a round of applause at this time, and thank you for coming. Would you please stand up, the tutors, if you're here? Would the tutors please stand up, so that we can recognize you? Great, great, thank you. In the eleven years that we've had this program, we've benefited over six hundred and fifty adult learners, and I think that really is a testament to the work that you do, and the work that is needed here in Tulare County, and so, we're so grateful for all the tutors, and we're so grateful for all the participants that are willing to reach out and to learn so that they can better themselves, so I think it's a great program, and before cutting anyone else off, I'll let them speak, but I'd like to make a move for approval of this item.
I'll second it with a comment, you know, the one young lady mentioned that this program was a right fit for her, what I've learned is that these tutors are actually tutors and mentors, and once they get their hooks into you, they're not gonna let go until they help you reach the goals that you're looking for, so, a wonderful group of people, I'm honored to be able to spend a little time with them each year, and the different events that we do, but they are a wonderful group of people, and they, they do care tremendously about their students, and those of you that are students here, they do care about you, they love you, they're concerned for you, and they wanna see you succeed, as do we.
Supervisor Worthley, did you have a comment?
Well, no, I think it's all been well said, and I just so much appreciate our tutors, the folks who volunteer their time and effort, such a worthwhile thing, and for some of those who are retiring from our county employment, you might think about opportunities of public service, this would be a great avenue to look at, but, and Brian, thank you so much, I'm disturbed that we're not able to continue the Jailhouse Rocks program, and hoping that maybe there's some other way of doing that without the funding, but anyway, thank you so much for the work that your department does, and for the impact it has on the people of Tulare County.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Cox, cast your votes. It's unanimous, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I must make mention that Supervisor Ashida is unable to be with us today, he's in Sacramento on some county business, so, that's why he's not here. We're gonna kinda go out of order here a little bit, we're gonna move now to item four, public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the Board on matters concerning the county, but not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public comment, and we'll move to Supervisor Matters. Supervisor Worthley.
Chairman, again, just wanted to announce, it's had some publicity, but ten o'clock on this Thursday at Dinuba, at Lewis Rees Park, there will be a groundbreaking for the next Phase Two of Road Eighty, which will go from Avenue Four Sixteen down to Avenue Three Eighty-four, and another great project in the works from our Tulare County Association of Governments in Tulare County, and while I'm at that, just to, wanna say we should keep our executive officer in our prayers and thoughts, as he is in the hospital right now for a period of time, so just to hope that he's, that's Ted Smalley, so, thank you for that opportunity.
Supervisor Cox?
Tonight is the College of Sequoias Measure I Oversight Committee meeting, I have the pleasure of serving on that committee, and it's interesting to see how the College of Sequoias in the last few years has progressed, and moved forward in leaps and bounds, those of you who drive around COS, notice that the south parking lot is well underway, they were able to purchase all of the homes in that area, and they've all been demolished, the street has been taken out and abandoned, and that parking lot project is well underway, it's gonna allow for some future expansion of that campus, to have that parking in there, and I can report to you that they have spent those monies prudently, and have been very, very conscious about how they do spend those funds, with the savings that were experienced off of some of the projects, they were able to do an expanded soccer field project on the west side of that campus, so you see that going on as well, they're doing the all-weather turf, and the track, a nice, a new track out there, as well as a new parking lot, so, the College of Sequoias Measure I and Measure J over in Tulare has done very well, and the campus is really progressing well, they opened their center at Hamford this year with Police and Fire Academy, and the classes were full there, the first year as well, so, that, being on that Oversight Committee, I can let folks know that they have spent the money wisely, and they've been very prudent and very careful, and with those, with those funds.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Just a couple things this morning, I just wanted to invite anyone in the community that's interested in participating and helping with the Outpost Step-Up Event, to attend a planning meeting, it's this Thursday, and it's at two o'clock at the Outpost School, looking forward to putting that event on in May, so, anyone who's interested in coming and helping out, that would really be helpful. And then lastly, this Sunday at two PM, the Tulare Historical Museum is hosting an event honoring the firefighters of Tulare, for the work that they do and their commitment to the community, so I'd invite everyone to attend to that event as well.
Thank you. Last night, I attended the unveiling of the Victims' Rights Quilts, Victims of Homicide at Holiday Inn, put on by the DA's office, very moving ceremony, full house, enjoyed that very much, and seeing all the people. We'll continue to have our Step-Up Event for Porterville, we'll have another planning meeting on Wednesday at the Porterville PD, and I wanna commend K-Tip Radio for running ads, they're running probably, I don't know, five or six ads a day, talking about this event that'll be happening May fifth in Porterville, so, looking forward to that, and also, last week, we awarded the Indian Gaming money, the county received a hundred and sixty thousand, City of Porterville a little over three hundred, and Sierra Vista, U District Hospital, fifty thousand dollars, so, that pretty well rounded that out, so, looking forward to the Step-Up Event, and the planning of that. Now, let's move to, let's move to Consent Calendar, does anybody wish to remove anything from the Consent Calendar?
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Cox, cast your votes, vote is unanimous, thank you. Now, let's move to item number three, which is our Service Awards Presentations, and we'll start with District One.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, and members of the Board. Today, I'm honored to be able to continue with our program for employees who are being recognized for their long service to Tulare County. The Service Awards Program recognizes employees who have completed ten or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. It's noteworthy to mention that the Board is recognizing employees in the month of April, which also is the National County Government Month. Today we honor, today and last week, we honor over four hundred and thirty-five employees this year for their loyalty, hard work, compassion, and service ethic that they provide to their departments, and the citizens of Tulare County. As I read a little bit about these workers, you will hear that many are also good Samaritans and humanitarians in other areas of their lives, and volunteer in their communities, with their church, in school activities, and in service clubs. Many have also developed other special talents that you will hear about today. Some of our employees were a little shy about telling us about themselves, so today, I will be honoring their request to keep an announcement brief. Some fifteen-plus-years employees will receive their gift without being present today at these meetings. Awards for employees who have completed ten years of service will be presented in the Employees Department, there are a hundred and seventy-three of those who will be receiving ten-year service awards this year. For recipients, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your reward. Some of our fragile gifts, and some of our large gifts, have boxes that you can pick up from our staff at the conclusion of our award ceremony. So, we'll begin with District One, with Supervisor Alan Ashida, Chairman Ennis will be presenting for District One. Would Roseanne Bean come forward? Roseanne is an Office Assistant Three with the Sheriff's Department, she moved here from the Bay Area after an earthquake, and joined the Sheriff's Department as extra help, and then became full-time. She has received an award from the State DEA, and I'm assuming that's Drug Enforcement Agency, for her work against community drugs, she loves antiquing, junk shopping with her sisters, and she was able to purchase her first home in two thousand, and is a new grandparent, congratulations. Greg Gomez, IT Database Administrator One with the Information Technology Department, fifteen years of service. Greg began his career with us in Health and Human Services as a clerk, too, and has been promoted many times during his career. He attended UC Berkeley, he is a Microsoft Certified Professional, and has a certificate, he is a husband of sixteen-plus years, has two teenage daughters, and a toddler. He is also Vice Chairman of the Farmersville City Planning Commission, and President of the County SEIU Chapter, congratulations, Greg. Pam Weller. Pam is an IT Division Manager with Information Technology, and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. She started working with Health and Human Services as an Account Representative, and has been also promoted during her career, and is a Project Office and Business Services Division Manager. She has certificates in project management, she enjoys cooking and gardening, and helping with the family citrus and cattle ranch, and she is the proud grandmother of three daughters, congratulations. Marvin Clark. Marvin worked, last worked with our Ag and Standards, as an Ag and Standards Inspector Two at the Ag Commissioner Office, has twenty years of service with Tulare County, he has the distinction of being the third generation of Tulare County Ag Inspectors, his father and grandfather worked for the county for many years, actually seventy years of total service. He's been on the Board of Directors of the Sequoia Memorial District, he enjoys horticulture, gardening, wood and metal shop, ag photography, poetry, and music, congratulations, Marvin. Sergeant Alan Knight. Sergeant Knight has twenty years with the Tulare County Sheriff's Department, and he currently is assigned to the Headquarters Patrol Division, he has worked the bomb squad, search and rescue as a coordinator, he enjoys backcountry fishing and golf, congratulations, Sergeant Knight. Pat Aldrich. Pat Aldrich. Pat has 25 years of service with Tulare County and is a Probation Division Manager in the Probation Department. He began as a probation correctional officer and has been promoted throughout his career. He was in our juvenile detention facility for many years, but his department says he finally escaped confinement in 2005 and is currently assigned as a Division Manager at the Adult Services Division. The department says he is extremely knowledgeable regarding all facets of community-based corrections, completes assigned tasks however difficult they may be, and usually with some frightening speeds, and is a valued member of the management team. It's interesting to note that Pat is a former Olympic hopeful based on his skills as a pole vaulter in 1974, and he was recognized as one of the best pole vaulters in the United States. He's committed to a healthy lifestyle, is a gourmet cook, and he dreams of going to chef's school. He also enjoys ply fishing and spends time at the coast. Congratulations, Pat. Teresa Saucido. Teresa is a Chief Deputy County Council and has 25 years of service with the County of Tulare. She began her career working as in the Southern New Mexico Legal Services, for the Oregon Legal Services, and for the California Rural Legal Assistance League. She has a bachelor's in languages as well as her legal degrees. She was County Council Employee of the Year, has won County Council Association's Awards, the Latino Peace Officer Woman of the Year, and was the City of Lindsay Woman of the Year in 2009. She coaches high school mock trials and also is a lecturer at Sacred Heart Catholic Church. She's married to Superior Court Judge Val Saucido, and they, of course, have two children in law school. Congratulations.
You need a telescope if you want to know what they are.
Gail is retired from Tulare County, has 25 years of service, and last served in the District Attorney's Office. She has worked in the Health and Human Services Department as well. She enjoys sewing, gardening, and travel. Congratulations, Gail. Kevin Bowle is a District Attorney Investigator and has 30 years of service with Tulare County. He started as a patrolman for the City of Woodlake, came to the Tulare County Sheriff's Office, and worked as a resident deputy in Three Rivers, and has been promoted and worked in, as a DA investigator. He has been a range master for the county. He has been awarded awards from the Three Rivers Lions Club. He received a Knights of Columbus Award and a VFW Law Enforcement Officer and recipient of the J. Edgar Hoover Award. He enjoys camping with friends, has two grown, successful sons, three beautiful stepdaughters, and seven wonderful grandchildren. Congratulations, Kevin.
That's because he's always definitely looking like a ninja.
Okay, Supervisor Peter Vanderpool, District Two. We'll begin with Edna Blackhurst. Edna is a Secretary Three for the Cooperative Extension Department and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. She graduated from Tulare Union High School and went to COS for two years. She was the Co-op Extension Employee of the Year twice during her 15-year career so far. She loves to do anything crafty. She enjoys making wedding cakes as a hobby, has also re-outfitted a room in her office including putting in sheet rock and laminate floors.
Oh, gosh.
And she has 14 grandchildren.
Whoa.
Ranging from nine months to 21 years of age. She is very grateful for her job at Co-op Extension, says Edna, and the working relationships. She receives outstanding support from the department. Congratulations. Melody is a Supervising Probation Officer with our Probation Department and has 20 years of service with Tulare County. She began work in Health and Human Services and moved to the Probation Department in 1994. She studies sociology and criminalology and has received special training for Reconnecting Youth Program and Children Exposed in Violence. She enjoys singing, reading a good book, and hanging out with her family. Her department says of her, "Melody has a genuine interest in providing programs that assist youth in a smooth transition from the facility back into the community, with the hope what they have learned will provide them with a positive outlook for their future." Congratulations. Patricia is a Senior Account Clerk with the Ag Commissioner's Office and has 20 years of service with Tulare County. She has her bachelor's degree from Chapman University, has been an Employee of the Month for the department. Her hobbies include photography and scrapbooking, and she is a new great aunt to Aiden and Jacob. Congratulations. Sherry is a Legal Office Assistant Four with our Child Services, Support Services Department and has 30 years of service with Tulare County. She started working there as a clerk, too, and has been promoted numerous times. She received the County of Tulare Employee Recognition Program Certificate of Appreciation in 2007 and 2009. She enjoys sewing, quilting, and gardening, and she is a new grandparent of Krista McKellar Reeves, who was the first baby born in Tulare County in 2011. Greg has been an Ag and Standards Inspector Three with the Ag Commissioner Sealer's Office and has 35 years of service with Tulare County. His district included Pixley, Early Mart, Ducor, and Rich Grove, and he served those areas for 25 years of his career. He has a bachelor's from Fresno State and has many certificates related to the Ag Commissioner and Waits and Measures Department. He enjoys gambling, seeing rap kids, and gardening. Ken is Cadastral Supervisor for the Assessor Clerk Recorder's Office and has 35 years of service in Tulare County. His entire career has been with the Assessor's Office, and he has been a supervisor 32 of his 35 years. He earned an Associate of Arts and Associate of Science Degree, is a Certified Engineering Technician, and a Certified Paralegal. He and his wife of 39 years live in Tulare, have a son, daughter, and four grandchildren. Says James Coley, Department Supervisor, Ken has been an invaluable employee in the Assessor Clerk Recorder's Office for over three decades. His dedication to and expertise in serving the taxpayers of Tulare County is, in his capacity as a CAD Supervisor, will be greatly missed and difficult to replace. Congratulations. And for those of you who can't see, he has a beautiful clock. District Three Supervisor Phil Cox will present. Deputy Bejarano is a Sheriff's Deputy One and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. Congratulations. Dennis is a Probation Officer Two with the Probation Department and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. Congratulations, Dennis. Michelle is a Supervising Probation Officer, also has 15 years of service with the Probation Department. Congratulations, Michelle. Judy is a Civil Attorney Four with the County Council Department and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. She held her bachelor's in English from Chico State and a law degree from McGeorge School of Law. She enjoys watching her children play sports, music, reading, writing, and volunteering at her kid's school. Congratulations, Judy. Bill is a Probation Officer Two and has 15 years of service with the Probation Department. He began as a probation correctional officer and has been, has been promoted several times to other positions. He is currently assigned to the Domestic Violence Safe Program. His department says he is well-respected by management, coworkers, and other agencies and law enforcement partners. He sets an example and serves as a mentor to newer staff members. He has been married for 29 years and has three children. He has also served as an assistant baseball coach at Mount Whitney High School for a number of years and is currently an assistant baseball coach at Redwood High School. When he's not doing all of the above, he enjoys golfing and traveling. Congratulations. Deputy David De La Cruz. Deputy De La Cruz is a Sheriff's Deputy Two with the Sheriff's Department. He has served in the Detention Division, Porterville Patrol, in the STEP Program, and also in Narcotics. He has received awards for participating as a bugler for the United States Marine Corps Reserve and has participated in parades with the Corps, as in Corps Reserves, and for toys for tots in the past. He enjoys shooting, jiu-jitsu, watching movies, and being with his family. He honorably served in Operations Enduring Freedom and Iraqi Freedom and has been in the U.S. Marine Corps for 19 years as an active and reserve. Congratulations. Jose is a Probation Division Manager with the Probation Department and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. He started as a correctional officer and also has been promoted during his career with us. He currently manages Special Services Division, including the Gang, Team Suppression, Campus Probation Officer, Placement, and Family Preservation Units. He resides in Visalia with his wife Yolanda, who is a school psychologist, and their three children. He is a dedicated father and coaches his children's soccer teams. And it says here, despite being an impeccable dresser, he enjoys, or is learning to enjoy, camping with his family. Joe has been with the County of Tulare and is a Child Welfare Services Manager. He has over 15 years with the county, having worked with the Porterville Youth Services before joining the county. He has a Marriage and Family Therapy Degree, a BA in Psychology, and a minor in Speech. He has been very involved in the Porterville area, coordinating three programs in the city of Porterville to help the city achieve All-American status. He also worked to get funding for an opening, a youth center in 1993. He enjoys camping, archery, hunting, weight training, and exploring. He also is a proud parent of three grown boys and one grandchild. Congratulations, Joseph. John is a telecommunications tech with our Information Technology Department and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. Says of his supervisor, Paul Sims, "When John started working for the county, the Merlin phone system was state-of-the-art. Since that time, there was the Y2K project to replace all the phone systems in the county. Then a couple of years ago, he converted to voice and over IP. He's been very instrumental in all projects. As part of the telecom team, he received a Certificate of Appreciation from the Board of Supervisors for his contribution at the Juvenile Justice Center and the pre-trial projects. He is a shining example of what hard work and customer service is all about." Congratulations, John. We'll get Elsa's award to her if she's not here today, but we offer our congratulations. She is a Deputy Sheriff One and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. Mike Ortiz. Mike is a Probation Officer Three with the Probation Department and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. He has received numerous promotions in his career, currently assigned to the Recovery Court Program as a court officer. It says of Mike from his department, "He is gifted in his ability to interact equally well with drug-involved clients, coworkers, other agencies, and the judges of the Superior Court. He does an excellent job in court and has established a positive and professional relationship. He is a devoted husband and wife and is father of three children." I'm sorry. Devoted husband. He is the husband. He's a computer whiz and enjoys working on old trucks. He is currently restoring a 1959 Ford pickup truck. Brian is an IT Systems and Pursengers Analyst Two with the Information Technology Department and has 15 years of service with Tulare County. He began his career with the Health and Human Services MIS Unit, which has been merged when we created the new IT Department. He has a Bachelor of Science in Social Services. He was elected to Tulare County United States Bowling Congress Hall of Fame for both superior performance and meritorious service. He bowls competitively and is a former member of the Professional Bowlers Association. He, and also enjoys playing tournament poker. He has three wonderful daughters and two beautiful granddaughters, and his daughters have all received their educational degrees and are working in their professional areas. Congratulations, Brian. Harold Pytley. Carol Pytling. Carol is a senior administrative analyst with the county administrative office and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. She worked for many years in the auditor controller's office and then transferred to CAO in January of 2009. She graduated from the State University of New York and then headed west with her family and landed here in California. While at the auditor's office, she was awarded the Government Finance Officers Association's Award for Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting for thirteen consecutive years. She loves her grandchildren, enjoys spending time with them, and also writing Harley-Davidsons. Congratulations Carol. Catherine Rodriguez. Catherine is an emergency dispatcher two with the sheriff's department and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. She has received her basic dispatcher post instructor award, has done training in sexual assault and domestic violence for dispatchers. She enjoys scuba diving, camping, traveling, and reading. And her family is very involved in law enforcement. Her husband is also a detective with the sheriff's department, and her youngest son works as a detention specialist at our jails. She is the mother of four and the grandmother of two. Congratulations Catherine. Connie Sartucci. We will get Connie's award to her. She is an office assistant three with the probation department and has fifteen years of service. Linda Cantu. Linda is a title and administrative technician two with the assessor clerk recorder's office and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. Congratulations Linda. Babette Cotta. Babette is an accountant two with our sheriff's department and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. She has worked in the environmental health department, the auditor's office, back to HHSA, and then with the sheriff's department. She graduated from high school and went to Golden State Business College where she received her certification. She is proud of her two wonderful daughters and has been blessed with three gorgeous granddaughters and one handsome grandson. Congratulations. Jay Jones. Jay is an IT or the IT division manager for information technology department and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. He started with our mental health department when it was a mental health department as an administrative aide, has been a staff analyst, and then assistant's operation manager in Health and Human Services. And then he went over to the new IT department as the division manager. He has received several employee recognition awards during his career. Peg Yates, the director of the department, says of Jay, he is a valued partner in IT. He constantly looks for solutions that meet and exceeds the county's needs. Congratulations. Bill Kelly. Phil is a probation Officer Three with the probation department and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. He's worked in almost every area of the department and is currently assigned to the gang unit. He received the Knights of Columbus Officer of the Year Award in 2010. Congratulations Phil. Carol Laird. Carol is a civil attorney five with county council's office and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. She joined county council in 1990 and served on the school team. Her practice is primarily focused on student and employee issues. She has a bachelor's in English as well as her law degree from UC Davis. She enjoys jogging, traveling, and having guests for dinner. She's been married for forty years and is married to Phil, who also practices law in Visalia. They have three children and their first grandchild just turned one. Congratulations. Angela Rose. Angela is the administrative services officer three for information technology department and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. She has worked for the clerk recorder's office, the child support department, the county sheriff's department, and then joined information technology in 2008. She enjoys reading and gardening, has a bachelor's in business administration, and is working on her MPA. Congratulations Angela. Sally Vanseel. Sally is a probation Officer Three and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. She has supervised juveniles, has fun supervising adults, and great fun in writing sentencing recommendations for the court. She has a BA in sociology. Her supervisor, Mary Ann Baruman Lozen, says Sally is a valuable member of the probation department. She is a patient teacher and mentor to new staff and always makes them feel welcome. Her interpersonal skills and her ability to communicate and relate effectively with defendants as well as all staff make her a valuable addition to the department. Congratulations. Judy Weems. Judy is the department secretary for human resources and development and has twenty years of service with Tulare County. She has also been a longtime coordinator for the county employee service awards. Judy is a little bit shy, but I'm going to say a few things anyway. Judy enjoys her family very much and spends a lot of time with her extended family. She has raised two wonderful children on her own, which is a proud, she should be proud of her accomplishment. She enjoys Disney and goes there several times to the theme parks throughout the year and is always up on the latest Disney news. She serves as supervisor over our support unit and also as a support to the managers in the department, and we couldn't get through our days without her. She is also a pet person and has several dogs, cats, and a tortoise. Congratulations Judy. Lieutenant Marsh Carter. Lieutenant Carter has served Tulare County for twenty-five years and is with the sheriff's department. He was promoted in 2003 to the rank of lieutenant. He has supervised street crime units, the ag crime unit, property investigations, dispatch, crimes against persons, and narcotics units. His ancillary duties include dive and swift water supervisor, search and rescue supervisor, department pilot, and liaison to the sheriff's arrow squadron. He will be graduating with a Bachelor of Science degree in the fall of 2011. He was named Officer of the Year by the Veterans of Foreign Wars in Porterville, enjoys flying, scuba diving, motorcycle riding, and gardening. Congratulations Lieutenant Carter. Evelyn Smithers. Evelyn is the administrative services manager in human resources and development department and has twenty-five years of service with Tulare County. She states she feels privileged that Tulare County has provided opportunities that have helped her develop her potential from entry-level office assistant to her present position as manager. She has supervised many upgrade and system changes to our HR payroll and our enterprise system. She is our enterprise guru for the county. She was awarded the HRD Employee of the Year in 2006, is an avid reader, and enjoys piecing quilts. And her life includes her wonderful husband of thirty-six years, three children, seven grandchildren, who are the light of her eyes. She finds fulfillment in sharing her faith and serving in her church, and she has been a great asset to human resources and development. Congratulations Evelyn. Diane Stye. Diane is a legal office assistant two with child support services department and has twenty-five years of service with Tulare County. She attended Fresno Pacific University and received a Bachelor of Arts degree in June of 2005. She enjoys downhill skiing, painting, drawing landscapes, watercolors, gardening, and crocheting. Diane took the time to make a statement and says, I believe if you want to be victorious in whatever you choose to do or to take on, you must make it a challenging experience. Perseverance will eventually take you to the finish line. Get creative in every aspect of your life, beginning now. Congratulations Diane. Gerald Westbrook. Gerald is an appraiser four with the assessor clerk recorder's office and has twenty-five years of service with Tulare County. He is now the supervisor of the ag crew. He has been the employee of the year with the assessor's office in 2003, enjoys gardening and watching football, and spending time with his three grandchildren. Congratulations Gerald. Harold Wood. Harold is the chief deputy county counsel over the schools division of county council. He has served Tulare County for twenty-five years. He specializes in school law, advising school boards, school district superintendents, and the county superintendent of schools on a wide variety of related legal issues. He received his legal degree from Seattle University in 1980, enjoys photography, hiking, and camping, and traveling. Congratulations Harold. Sergeant Thomas Wright. Sergeant Wright has been with the sheriff's department and Tulare County for twenty-five years of service. He came to us after having an extended employment in real estate, property management, and screenwriting. He has served in several capacities with the county of Tulare and is currently assigned in the coroner's division. He's been a member of the county's child death review team, of Health and Human Services Multidisciplinary Team for Elder Abuse, is on the Suicide Prevention Task Force, and on Health and Human Services Public Health Emergency Planning Committee. He has many degrees, a bachelor's in political science, as well as criminology, and other certifications. He loves to study histories and enjoys the classics and early American. He enjoys music, travel, and politics, and he is the proud parent of daughter Marissa, who is a speech therapist at the county of Tulare Office of Education, again, public service, and another daughter, who has just joined a company in Denver, Colorado, who's working with forecasting services for government. Congratulations Lieutenant Sergeant Wright. Winona Byer. Winona is retired and formerly worked with the sheriff's security, as sheriff's security officer and in the sheriff's department and Tulare County for thirty years. She started with our welfare department, back when it was called the Welfare Department, has been with general services, mailroom services, and then with the sheriff's department. She enjoys gardening, reading, cooking, and she visited her brother in Greece during the first two weeks of May of 2010, presumably when she was retired. Congratulations. Margie Flores. Is Margie with us?
Yeah, she's coming.
Margie is retired from service with Tulare County after thirty years, has been a tax collection supervisor with the auditor treasure tax collector's office. She was the employee of the year for Tulare County in 2005. She enjoys three children and six grandchildren. And the department says of her, everyone could go to Margie and get any question answered. She always had answers or she could find it. The tax collector staff depended upon Margie to guide them to areas where the research could be found. Her knowledge of the revenue and taxation codes were an asset to our department. Who knew one person could quote all the codes without even a pause? Congratulations to Margie. Christine Alvera. Christine is a probation Officer Three and has thirty years of service with our probation department and the county of Tulare. Congratulations Christine. Gary Eddy. Gary, who is retired, was an appraiser four with our assessor's office for thirty-five years. He does hold his bachelor's in ag business management and an advanced appraisal certificate. He enjoys volleyball and softball. And as he alluded to previously, it says, I thought I might be with the county for six to twelve months. Instead, he stayed for thirty-five years. Congratulations Gary.
I'd like to acknowledge this, at this time, that Sheriff Bill Whitman is in our audience today in support of his people. We appreciate you being here, Sheriff Bill.
District Four Supervisor Steve Worthley will present. David Bilheimer. David is a maintenance worker three with Capital Projects Facilities and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. He was originally assigned to the juvenile, the old juvenile hall when he first started working for us and was the sole maintenance man there, responsible for the entire building. He has been promoted to maintenance worker two and then on to lead maintenance worker at the Juvenile Justice Center. He is now at our government Plaza shop. He is active in his community and his church. He does hospital visits and participates in the prison detentions visitation program. Says of David's supervisor, he has the foresight to see potential problems and takes care of them before they become issues. He ensures the equipment in his inventory is accounted for and is operating properly. He is an exceptional employee and an asset to the Capital Projects Facilities Department. Congratulations David. Jennifer Brown. Jennifer is a principal clerk with the probation department, and she has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. We'll make sure she gets her award. Rebecca Weber. Rebecca is a recruiter assistant for the Child Support Services Department and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. She started as an office assistant two and has received numerous promotions. She's also been recognized by the department in 2005 and six as the employee recognition program. She has a can-do attitude and attention to detail. She has a can-do attitude and attention to detail has made her a true asset to child support, says her supervisor, Brianna Van Der Schaaf. Dan Bigum. Dan is an Ag and Standards Inspector Three with our Ag Commissioner Seeler and has twenty years of service. Sandra Bernitsky. Sandra is a Training Officer Two with the Child Support Services Department and has twenty years of service for Tulare County. She began in Health and Human Services and has moved on to child support. She trains, is a Training for Trainers, certified from the Office of Child Support Enforcement, and has a Master Trainer Degree from Longerton Training Systems. She has received a Staff Award during her career, and is a proud mother of two. Carol Harland. Carol is a Legal Clerk Two with Child Support Services. Her hobbies include reading, knitting, gardening, and traveling. Her supervisor says Carol's record of success in the positions she's held over the years demonstrates her strong work ethic in all areas. She never stops trying to improve herself, and she always finds ways for improvement for Tulare County. Sylvia Olson. Sylvia is a Civil Office Assistant Two with County Council and has served Tulare County for twenty years. She worked in the Health and Human Services Agency in the Dynuba and Visalia Clinics and came to County Council, where she is currently working. She enjoys walking, reading, arts, and crafts, and spending time with six grandchildren. Lieutenant Gary Chambers. Lieutenant Chambers has served with Tulare County Sheriff's Department for twenty-five years. He started as a Reserve Deputy, and he has also worked in the District Attorney's Office. He has also taught at the College of Sequoias for nineteen years. In 2009, he was recognized as the County Sheriff Officer of the Year. In 2010, he was recognized as a Man of the Year from the Cutler Rossi Chamber of Commerce. He enjoys playing his guitar, oil painting, going anywhere with his family in his motorhome. He has been married for thirty-four years and has two daughters. Nora is a Title and Administrative Technician Two with the Assessor Clerk Recorder's Office and has thirty-five years of service with Tulare County. Captain Jim Jimmy Hinesley. Captain Hinesley has thirty-five years of service with Tulare County in the Sheriff's Department. He has worked in almost every division of the department. He is a graduate of the FBI National Academy. He loves to motorhome and has traveled all over the United States. And that concludes District Four. District Five Chairman Mike Ennis. The first reward goes to Sergeant Jody Cox. It shows here Jody has fifteen years of service with Tulare County, but he actually worked two previous years for us. He has worked in law enforcement, both in the Sheriff's Department and for the City of Tulare Police Department. He has numerous work-related certificates, a Special Investigator's Certificate, and a specialty in homicide investigations. He has been the Officer of the Year and serves with the Deputy Sheriff's Association Executive Board. He is active in his church, community, and the Deputy Sheriff's Association, as well as motorcycling. He is married, has four grown children, a one-year-old grandson, with two more grandchildren due this year. Melody is a District Attorney Investigator and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. She has also worked with the County Sheriff's Department for ten years of service, beginning with the deputy, was also a sergeant there. Saying of Melody, her supervisor Brian Davis, "Melody has been a great addition to the District Attorney's Office. Her experience and education is outstanding." Phil is a Supervising Probation Officer and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County. He began as an Extra Help Probation Correctional Officer and has been promoted numerous times to his position now of Supervising PO. He has been assigned to every facet of probation supervision since 1995, and as you can see, he is currently involved in drug detection activities along with his partner Reza, who is our drug dog for probation. Philip and Reza were recently involved in a search in Visalia in a commercial location where Reza found thirty pounds of freeze-packed marijuana. Phil is a member of the Tulare County Gang Tax Force and has been a Latino Peace Officer of the Year. He is the father of two children. He has also been officiating high school and junior college football and basketball games for twenty-four years, and was the first official in Kings and Tulare Counties to officiate on a state level both a football and basketball championship. Congratulations Phil Lozano. George Luna. George is Supervising Probation Officer and has fifteen years of service with Tulare County and the Probation Department. He has a Bachelor's in Criminology from Fresno State, received an Employee Recognition Award in 2010, and the Latino Peace Officer Award in 2001. Among his hobbies is he likes to be involved in his community, and he was previously on the Parks and Leisure Commission in Porterville. He is also a fourth-degree member of the Knights of Columbus. Congratulations George Luna. Donna Ellis. Donna is a Library Assistant Two with our County Library and has served Tulare County citizens for twenty years. She also had two prior careers, as a cosmetologist for tenure and in real estate sales. She found her niche in life by working with the Tulare County Library. She enjoys arts and crafts, watches movies, old and new, and playing with her eight grandchildren. And she enjoys organizing and participating in the Tulare County Children's Programs in the library. Donna has done an excellent job working with the residents of Strathmore and Springville, says her supervisor Judy Hill. Eleanor Westmoreland. Eleanor has twenty years of service with Tulare County and is an IT Database Administrator One. David is retired from Tulare County as an Ag and Standards Inspector Three and has forty years of service with the County of Tulare in the Ag Commissioner's Office. His hobbies include agriculture and collecting vintage citrus crate labels. And that concludes our Service Awards for 2011. I want to thank Judy Weems, who coordinates our program, as well as Anita Spalding from our support staff, who helped both today and last week with the awards. And I would like to also thank the departments and supervisors who helped us in getting information about your employees to us, and also recognizing our great county employees.
Okay, thank you. And probably the supervisor would like to say a few comments. Start with Supervisor Vanderpool.
I just really want to thank all of the employees who have been recognized today for their many years of service. Many of you have served longer than I've been alive. I'll take that comment before Supervisor Worthley does it for me. But I thank you so much for what you do, not only for the county, but as the descriptions of your lives have shown as well. You do much more for the community and those around you than you do even for the county, and you do an awful lot for us. So I really commend you for your service and dedication to not only the county, but your communities. It's great to have you here, and we sure hope that you have many, many more great years of service to our county and the people of the county. It's you, the employees, that make Tulare County what it is, and we thank you for your dedication and service.
Well, it's my seventh year adding up the years, one thousand three hundred years of services represented here today from the employees that receive your awards, so your dedication is well noted. I really like this format where we get to hear a little bit about each person and the service you do in the community, although I was disturbed about one. Phil coaching Whitney and Redwood just doesn't set well with me, this Whitney High School graduate, but I guess serve where you can. Redwood needs it.
Supervisor Worthley.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is my thirteenth year of doing this, so some of you I've seen cycle through here two different times, and I must say, I don't know how you get younger-looking. It's amazing to me how that works, but as was stated by Mr. Vanderpool, you know, any success, and I believe we have had great success in our county, is entirely attributable to you all. And so thank you so much for your dedicated service to Tulare County and to its residents. You make Tulare County what it is, and you are also leaders in your fields. You might not think of yourself as leaders, but when you think of the number of years that you have served, you serve as mentors and leaders to the people that you work with. As people come onboard, new people, they look to you for leadership and just the skills that you can share with them. I agree with Supervisor Cox. Not too many years ago, we used to just kind of have people come up and introduce them by name, and away we'd go. It's really nice to hear about your personal accomplishments, a little something about you, and to recognize that every man, every woman, has a story, and we just appreciate that you share that with us. I had no idea we had a professional bowler on our team, and it's great to know. And I didn't realize that crafty could be a good thing. So you learn a lot of things about people, and it's so great to have you here this morning. And Mr. Chairman, last time, as you get ready to excuse folks, so we have a history, but we missed it last time, of standing when you all are acknowledged as Board Supervisors. I hope we will do that again this morning.
Yeah, thank you very much for your years of service. You know, I look at it, the county is a business, and a business is only as good as the people. So the people that make up the business is what makes Tulare County, and you are those people, and thank you so much for all you do on a daily basis throughout the year. And thank you for all your years of service. And for those that have retired, we thank you for those years of service that you've given the county, and don't be a stranger. Stay in contact with us and continue to be a part of this big family. That's the way I look at it. And at this time, I would like to have a standing ovation for you guys from the board.
At this time, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll resume with the meeting. Maple's about fell out of his chair. First time the dog came up running back around here. He's had experiences with animals before. One time it was a dog, and it had something that pooped him. Okay, meeting's back in session. We'll take up item six, public hearing, request from Resource Management Agency to approve the California Statewide Community Development Authority's issuance of tax-exempt revenue obligations through the Housing Bond Program on behalf of construction and development of seventy-two unit apartment complex.
Thank you Chairman, Supervisors. Good morning. Lori Mercer, Resource Management Agency Community Development Manager. I hope this morning finds you all well. The California State Association of Counties, CSAC, is a partner of the California Statewide Community Development Authority. As a member of CSAC, the county is also a member of the statewide authority. The authority provides tax-exempt financing for housing and other community-based projects. All applicants that seek funding from the authority must first request approval from the member jurisdiction's legislative body. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the board, as a member of the authority, an opportunity to review the project and provide comments to the authority. The applicant is requesting a maximum of eight million dollars in housing bond funds from the authority for the construction of the Ivanhoe Family Apartments. The county is not liable for the repayment of these bonds. The project includes the purchase of approximately four point five acres and the construction of seventy-two apartment, seventy-two unit apartment complex. All the units will be restricted to very low-income individuals through deed restrictions and affordability covenants. Over the last few years, the county has partnered with the developer, the Corporation for Better Housing, to assist in the development of this project. The county has contributed several sources of grant funds to this project, including the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, grant funds from NSP One and NSP Three, state home funds, and redevelopment agency funds. As a supporter of this project, staff requests that the board adopt a resolution recommending that the authority provide bond financing for this project. Without this bond financing, this project will not be able to go to construction, which would jeopardize the other county contributions. We want to thank Corporation for Better Housing, and I'd like to thank John Hess and Sandra Saban, being penacious at the very least on this project. And with that, if you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions?
No.
Okay, if not, this is a public hearing. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wanting to approach the board on this matter may do so at this time. Seeing no one, close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Mr. Chairman, I move approval. Second. Okay, moved by Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item number twenty-seven. Question the County Administrative Officer to consider and modify if needed the Tulare County Grand Jury Report.
Good morning. Kristen Bennett, Assistant County Administrative Officer. The 2010-11 Grand Jury issued an interim report titled Excessive Mail Cost, and a response from your board is requested. For your consideration, a proposed response has been provided to you. Our reports, the respondent must address each finding stating whether it's an agreement or disagreement, and also each recommendation stating whether it- or disagreement, and also each recommendation stating whether it will be implemented or not. The report contained five findings, and the draft recommends agreement with four findings and partial agreement with clarification for one finding. There are two recommendations. One has been implemented, and the second will be implemented in the next six months. It's requested that you approve the revised, the draft response, and authorize the Chairman to sign, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions, but I do believe this is a good move. This is, if we're going to run this county like a government, we need to be looking at all aspects of it, and mail costs are one of those, so I think it's a good thing.
Supervisor Cox.
One quick question. This report doesn't say how many, you know, the finding number twos, apparently shipped some overnight stuff that could have been sent a different way. How many times did that happen? Were we talking a hundred pieces, a thousand pieces, ten thousand pieces of mail?
This particular report addressed one incident, and from our review, we haven't found other occurrences, so it was an isolated error.
Just seems like a lot of work for an isolated error to me. I'll move to approve our response.
Moved by Supervisor Cox. Seconded by Supervisor Worthley. Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you, Kristen. Okay, let's move on to item number twenty-eight. Authorize the continuance of the temporary receivership of Seville Water Company.
Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And as indicated, I'm here this morning to talk about the status of the Seville Water Company and the current receivership that it is under with the county of Tulare. Before I begin, I would like to recognize that in the audience this morning, you have a representative from the California Department of Public Health. You have a representative, or several representatives, from the Community Water Center, representatives from Self-Help Enterprises, as well as several representatives from the community of Seville. This morning, after my presentation, I'm recommending that the Board continue the receivership of the Seville Water Company for an additional twenty-four months until the end of June of 2013, subject to the same terms and conditions in the original order granting petition for appointment of receiver, which was issued by the court back in June of 2009. Seville Water Company is a small, private company that serves approximately seventy-five homes and a school in the community of Seville. That equates to about four hundred residents, and at the school, about one hundred and twenty-three students and twenty staff. This is a graphic of the Seville Water Company system as we know it today. You can see on there that it's a lot of four-inch, three-inch, small diameter steel pipes that have been in the ground for many, many years. Nobody can really date the age of the water system. It could go back as far as when the community of Seville map was recorded, which I believe was back in the thirties. In addition, the lines are located in alleyways or located behind lots, making them difficult to access. The Board approved accepting temporary receivership back on April 28, 2009. Prior to that meeting, there were two additional meetings that staff presented information regarding the Seville Water Company. The request came to us from a letter presented by Self-Help Enterprises, looking for assistance in trying to get some grant funding to rehabilitate the water system. And the receivership was for a period of two years, and expires on June 10 of this year. At that time, there were two projects that were being proposed for the water system. One was a new distribution system, and the second was a new well, storage tank, and a possible interconnect to the Yedam Water System, the community of Yedam. And the Yedam Water System is about a mile plus to the west of Seville, and one of, I think, is a very viable alternative is to connect to that system. One of the issues in this area is nitrates, and as you move to the west, that problem seems to lessen. We have two wells in Yedam, and both of them right now are below the level for nitrates. Also, as part of that, even if we did connect to the Yedam system, we'd be looking at trying to drill a third well, adding another level of redundancy, plus a storage tank. With the assistance of Self-Help Enterprises, the county applied for two Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund planning project grants. Prior to, I believe, January of 2010, once you got a project sort of on the list, you had to do all of the engineering documents, the plans and specs, et cetera, on your own dime. There was no money to prepare PS and E. And so, that's what became the difficult part of delivering these projects, because nobody had the money to advance the engineering for the project. The law was changed, allowing these grant programs to now be used, the planning funds to prepare plans, specs, and estimates, and all the other work that needs to happen before you can put a project out to bid. And so, two projects were submitted. One was for designing the new distribution system, and the second was to deal with all the tasks associated with a new water source. In addition, the county had applied to the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development Program in order to find matching funds to the SRF construction funds. The objective here is for this project to be a hundred percent funded by grant funds to minimize any loans or other contributions that would need to come from the county or elsewhere in order to deliver this project. Back in early March of this year, as we started coming to the end of the receivership and started trying to find out where we were on the grants, are we going to be able to get the grants so we can proceed with design, so we can move on to construction, I discovered that the State Revolving Fund and the USDA grant programs will not fund systems that are not under public ownership. And the Seville Water Company is still considered as being in private ownership, even though the county of Tulare, which is a public entity, is managing the water system in receivership. About a week later, I had another conference call with CDPH, and they identified that planning projects would be eligible under the Safe Drinking Water, Water Quality, and Supply Flood Control River and Coastal Protection Bond Act of 2006, or what we affectionately refer to as Proposition 84. This funding will fund the PS and E for projects that are still in private hands. So this would be money that would work in the case of the Seville Water Company, as it's in receivership, as it's still in private hands. It requires that this project be competitive and ranked in the fundable range of the next round project priority list, which is round three, and advised that that list should be adopted in early May of 2001. I've been working with CDPH. I've been trying to get them to commit and say, you're on the list, you've got a project, but if you notice in the letter I received, it doesn't quite go that far. We're getting close. One of the things that does happen with the Prop 84 project is we're able to combine both projects into one single project and work on them together, so we can design both a distribution system and a new water source, and deliver it hopefully at one time, rather than splitting them in two. Proposition 84 can provide a hundred percent grant funding for the design, which means there would be no contribution by the county or any other source in order to at least get through the plan, specs, and estimate. It still would appear that construction is going to be under the State Revolving Fund and USDA Rural Assistance, sorry, Rural Development, should be RD, programs. So we're going to have to deal with a governance issue before we get to the point of receiving construction funding. Under the governance side, again, the construction funding we're looking at to date would require some sort of public entity own and operate the water system in Seville, taking a look at possible options to consider. One, the county has a countywide county service area. It's county service area number one, and within that county service area, we have numerous zones of benefit, one of which is a zone of benefit in Seville for sewer. So one of the options for consideration would be to treat the water system as just, as a zone of benefit, as we now do with three other water systems and eight sewer systems in the county. Another option would be to consider the creation of a community services district or other similar district that would be available to the system under state law. And in previous conversations, the community of Seville has expressed a desire for self-governance, and the community services district would be that opportunity for self-governance. However, whatever form of governance is chosen, it must be in place by the time the construction occurs, and must meet the minimal technical, managerial, and financial requirements of the state. And so, a possible opportunity or option might be, given that if you form a brand-new CSD in the community of Seville, the new Board, the new CSD, may not have the ability to meet those three terms in order to qualify for the grant funding, so it's, I think, a possibility to look at would be that the Board of Supervisors actually sits as the initial Board for the CSD if it's formed, if that's the route we take. And then, as the project matures and develops, then transition into a Board that would be comprised of Seville residents living within the CSD boundaries. The plus side of this is that the Prop 84 grant will fund the process to determine the public form of governance and getting to that point, and that's actually added, is identified in the scope of work that I'm currently working with CDPH on. Alternatives for the Board's consideration in your action this morning, one would be, obviously, you could take no action and let the receivership expire on June 10 of this year, which is a little over two months away. The other option for consideration would be to agree to extend the receivership, but to say you would only accept it for a shorter period of time if that's the direction of the Board. And then, lastly, this morning, I'm going ahead and recommending to extend it for twenty-four months or until June of 2013. My thought process is, is that the grant is going to take several months in order to execute the funding documents. Once the county is approved for the grant, then there's a process by which grant agreements are sent to the county. They have to be developed by the state. The county has to review them, take them to a process, and have them approved by the Board, return them, and then, you know, set up the financial structure for the flow of money. That could take anywhere from, say, three to six months to get through that process. The grant itself would have a life of eighteen months, but from the time you award the grant till the time you'd have to complete all aspects of the work would be eighteen months. If you figured it took three to six months to get to the grant, you got a total of eighteen months to complete it, that's a twenty-four-month period. And with that, I would respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions from the Board? Supervisor Cox.
On the Prop 84 monies, Brett, have we applied for those funds before, and what have they been used for? Is this what we typically call our parks?
That could have been. I'm not involved in those grants, so, on the park side.
I think, Mr. Russo, I am as well. I'm asking.
Supervisor Cox, Chief Associate CEO, we have applied for those and received Prop 84 funds for our parks. You are correct.
As of, if the Board of Supervisors agreed to be the CSD, would we be able to pay ourselves back the monies that we're out of pocket now?
That would be definitely my desire, as a recommendation to you, that we take any money that's in arrears, that still owed us by the property owners out there, and make sure we carry those forward and collect those, yes.
Talking out of the grant funds, because I...
I don't...
Can't use the grant funds.
Can't use the grant funds.
Okay. And it's also, we have other costs associated. Have we done repairs out there, emergency-type repairs, that weren't anticipated, that we're out of pocket for?
Yes. We had a line that leaked significantly, and because of the agedness of the system, there was no area where they could connect back up to repair the line, so we ended up replacing about six hundred feet of cast iron with PVC, and that was charged to the project, and we are paying for it with the monthly rate of sixty dollars per connection per month that we assess and collect on the property owners.
That'll bring me to my last two questions. The sixty-dollar assessed, it's my understanding that not everyone is actually paying their water bill, and that we, with our sewer out there, have the ability to add that bill to property taxes if they do not pay, but we do not have the ability to add the water bill to their property taxes if they do not pay. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And as we sit here today, what is the past due balance that has not been paid
The last report I have on the water alone, outstanding more than ninety days, is about seventeen thousand dollars.
I've got eighteen thousand, six ninety-four, so it must have a couple of... So, I mean, my point here is that we've received a lot of complaints about the water, and folks are not, some folks are not paying the bill at all, and we have no ability to collect those past due monies. I'm done.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I just want to be sure, Brett, from your perspective, are you relatively certain that over the two-year period that you're recommending for us to extend the receivership, that that is going to be a sufficient period of time for us to come up with a transitionary plan for governance, to put this into the hands of a community services district? I mean, are we going to be able to go through the LAFCO process and all of the necessary processes to get to that point? Because I just don't want to keep extending, extending, extending. You know, we've got a lot of grants, a lot of things that are going to be sensitive to time in nature, so I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to meet all of those deadlines in that period of time that you're recommending.
I have not had a conversation with LAFCO as to, you know, what they think would be the amount of time to get through the process. My approach is, should we be funded with a grant, knowing that that is out there? It would be to aggressively pursue that and do everything within my power to deliver that within eighteen months.
Okay. Thank you. More questions, or...
Well, just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I know this lack of payment is an issue, and I know currently we have no way of turning off individual residences. If I'm not mistaken, there's no individual cutoff valve. Is that...
We're not, we're not sure what's out there. It's in alleys, whether there's turn-off valves when the system was built. Every once in a while, you know, we stumble across one if we're out there working. Whenever we have a property owner that needs to do work on their service, we make sure they put a shut-off valve in so that we have one at the water main. So we're, when we, if we stumble across one, we have one. You know, we haven't spent the time and the money to go out and start, you know, digging up in people's backyards. This is in an alley, which is, in one case, a public right-of-way, but what's happened is development has sort of just, yards have just encroached into that. So we haven't used the shut-off procedure to enforce payment.
Well, I guess that's, that might be something for us to look at in the future. I know that that's not uncommon for cities and community services districts. If they don't pay their bills, and there's a notice requirement, and if they don't do that, they're shut down.
If I may comment on this, the problem we're having with enforcing the water is that this is a private company. We've just stepped into the shoes as a private receivership. If it was in public hands, then we could go ahead and enforce through the tax rule as we do with the sewer overages. Also, though, in public hands, it would be subject to Prop 218, with the majority protest for sewer and water phase.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons why the Board is not anxious. And this whole process began with the concept of creating a CSD, a community services district. The folks want to have control of their own destiny, and we want them to have control of their own destiny, and that's certainly part of the issue. But that doesn't stop us from effectuating shut-offs if people aren't paying their bills. And, you know, one of my thoughts is, on this matter, as we're going to go forward, because I'm certainly going to encourage the Board to do what I think we need to do, which is to extend this receivership, would be to, you know, if there's not a cutoff valve, you know, at the rate of sixty dollars per month, if people are just flat-out not paying over months and months and months, and it would be worth our time to send somebody out there, and if there's not a cutoff valve, put a cutoff valve in and take the steps that need to be necessary, because this is a problem going forward. I mean, it's obviously an issue with one of the members on this Board, maybe all of us, that as we go forward with the other two years, we don't want to get to two years and have thirty-four thousand dollars of unpaid water bills, or forty thousand of the unpaid water bills, because people are not paying their bills. We all have to pay our bills. We have to pay for services, and so that includes the folks who live there. I realize these are rather expensive rates, but that is, at this point, as you point out, we've had to replace pipes, and we have to recover for those costs. We're not trying to make monies of county. We're simply trying to provide a service. And another point I wanted to make is, because there's been some misunderstanding about this, that a receivership is not ownership. And I read in the paper, an article that said that we were the owners of the last two years. We've not owned the system. We do not own the system. We are receivers. The ownership remains in private ownership. The ownership remains in private ownership, and that's, as you pointed out, was one of the issues with our request and application for assistance. The other thing is that some people have indicated that we've had this, that we should have fixed this many, many years ago, and obviously, that goes to the point. We don't own the system. We have never owned the system. And the only time that we have been in a position to even have any contact with the system, other than as a regulatory agency through the Department of Health, has been when the receivership occurred, which is now approaching 17 months, whatever, 18 months ago, or however long it's been. So, we did not have the authority or ability to fix the system until now. We've never really had the authority, the ability to fix it. It was all predicated upon the fact that we would seek funding from federal or state dollars to be able to do the actual fixing of the system. And the counties worked diligently to try to get that done. One of the reasons it's been delayed is because of the state's financial problems and accessing funds from the state of California, if I'm not mistaken. So that has been something which was not anticipated when we took over the receivership almost two years ago. So, those are kind of the historical perspectives, I think, that are important to bring to this. But I do believe that it is the appropriate thing for the county to follow the recommendation of our staff, and I want to thank them. I thank you personally for the work that you've put into this matter, Britt, because I know it's taken up a lot of time. But the goal is, remains the same, to get good drinking water to the people of this community. And one thing we didn't spend a lot of time talking about, but will also be part of the planning process, I understand, it would be to look at consolidation of Seville with Yetum as one, perhaps one CSD, and create some efficiencies of scale there, which would help to hopefully bring down the cost for both communities, which, and their water rates are quite high. So, I don't want to have any more to say than that. I would support the recommendation and request that our board follow through.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
And Supervisor Worthley touched on it, and that was the consolidation of Seville with Yetum. But I think even on a broader scale, we need to look at some sort of a regional water system in that part of the county, because there's other communities, and I know that the distances might be even greater, but these are not isolated issues with just Seville. We have to come up with some sort of a regional plan for our unincorporated communities with private water systems, public water systems, and how we can create some sort of an economy of scale so that some of the poorest communities in our county aren't paying the water rates that they are paying, and the only way we can do that is through an economy of scale type of an effect, so.
If I might respond to that, Supervisor, there is a project proposed that has hit some rough spots in the road right now, but is still going forward, which is the Alt Irrigation District is proposing to build a surface water treatment facility that would be located probably in Cutler, and the objective there is to try to reach out to some of these outlined communities with that water, which would be, of course, deal directly with the situation we have here today. And again, economies of scale would be such that would help hopefully bring those rates down. And then, dealing with surface water, you don't have the nitrate problems, so we're not talking about groundwater. But that project is at least five or six years away, and in the meantime, we have a situation here that hasn't, I believe a path has been found now to find our way through this, to get to the point of bringing better water, and certainly a much better distribution center to the, or system to the community. And so I think we need to pursue that for now. And I mean, if you put the delivery system in, that's not going to be time-lot or wasted effort, because that would be utilized by whatever system we use in the future. And also, the wells are, can be very positive, again, from a redundancy standpoint. So, I think the project is a good project, certainly is really good for the community, and I realize there's a certain risk for the board to take in going forward, but I think it's the appropriate thing for us to do.
And I also understand the surface water project is not 100% source. It only provides a percentage of the source, so you still would need the wells, systems that are already in place to augment that.
Supervisor Cox?
One last thing. So, folks, don't think I'm totally heartless. I just don't, you know, believe in some taxpayers subsidizing others, and this is a subsidy. This is a gift. For years and years and years, I won't ask Britt what the number is, but the board has pumped money into these local systems that will never be paid back, and it's a million dollars now?
Not quite there. I think it's on the order of $700,000.
$700,000 that the board has pumped in, and, you know, I personally, and I've met with Laurel Firestone, some folks from the area, and, you know, and I still, I would be the first one out there on a trencher, on a backhoe, gluing pipe together, helping these people help themselves, and I will donate my time. I will go out there and do it, but some folks have the misconception that all this stuff is free. This is not free. Someone has got to pay for it. I paid for the water pipes in my house, coming up to my house, the curb and gutter in front of my house, you know, that was paid for through the price of buying my house. It was not free. I had to pay for it. And some folks just have this conception somehow that this stuff ought to be free, all the pipes leading up, and I just don't buy into that philosophy. Again, I'll be the first one there donating my time on a trencher, on a backhoe, and gluing pipe together to replace these pipes in this area. I just can't support this, because it's one group of taxpayers subsidizing another one.
Well, if I might respond to that somewhat, the real risk for the county would be if we were to create the service area approach, which is where we then are the owners of the system, and then we are the ones who charge back for the cost of services, and this was pointed out by council, subject to Prop 210, is that the right number?
18.
218, you know, we have, there's some issues there with the ability to actually recover our costs, and I think that's one of the reasons why the board does not want to go in that direction, and I certainly don't want to go in that direction. Supervisor Sheed is not here today, but he shared with me the other day that he's not interested in going in that direction either, so I don't, I think we're uniformly agreed that if this project were to go forward with it becoming a part of our systems, we would not want to pursue that. But I think the idea of pursuing the CSD, creating a system where they, the folks who are in that community, will be responsible for the system, they're the ones who have to look each other in the eye and say, "How much does it cost to run this system?", that's a different situation, and I believe that's the one that I'm supporting here today. As far as the system coming in free, you're absolutely correct. We're looking at, as Britt pointed out, 100% grant-funded program. However, two thoughts on that. One is, that is money that is being appropriated at the federal level, at the state level. If it doesn't go into our communities, it will go into some other communities. And the other thing is that one of the problems, one of the reasons that we have such high rates in our other areas is because many of those programs were, or systems were built, sewer and water with loans, and when we pay back the loans, and then we also pay for our services, because they are so small, that's what's caused this very high rate. If they weren't having to pay back 20 or 30 bucks a month of their bill towards a loan, then the operational cost would be much more affordable. So I do think it's, you know, it is what it is, but I think the pathway here is to use the county as a conduit to get to a way of affordable, good drinking water for the community and limit our exposure. And the real exposure would be to go the community services district approach.
One of the, one just point of information the board may be interested in as to the community services district approach, at some point, because this is a populated area, there probably would have to be an election by the property owners, so that would be a community-driven project.
Right. Yeah, we're aware of that.
And I also just have to point out, like you mentioned Supervisor Worthley, you know, just because this is state and federal grants that we're going to be receiving for this project, those are still our taxpayer dollars in some way, shape, or form, so it's some taxpayers subsidizing others, but I would rather see those subsidies come back to our county and help some of these communities that need the help. And this isn't a public system where some taxpayers have been subsidizing others for a long period of time. This is a private system that came into county receivership, and in the period that we've had it, we're trying to figure out some sort of a solution so that there won't be any subsidies, and it will be in the community's hands, and the community will have the power to run their own system. And I believe that's what I'm going to support today, so that the people of Seville will be in control of their own destiny, and they will be able to pay back what they have owed the county, and also keep their system sustainable going forward.
Pandora's box, folks. These grants don't connect the water to the house. Goes probably to the edge of the property to a valve, so there's still...
There's your opportunity to donate your time.
And I will be out there and I'll trench them myself.
Well, hopefully, this can be a model for the future for other communities with the same problem. So I think that's what we're trying to do here today, is solve a problem, and it's all about an improved people's way of life.
There are some folks here, Mr. Chairman, that I don't know if they wish to speak to this matter or not.
Would anybody like to speak to this matter today that's out there? I know it's not a public hearing, but if someone would like to get up and speak, they may. Come up and state your name and address. Use that microphone. You can use this one here if you want to. It's closer.
Hello. My name's Nalle Gonzalez, and I live at 38081 Row 155 in Seville, and our mailing address is Visalia, of course, because Visalia delivers our mail. And I'm here to represent myself and the members of our community, and we would really appreciate your continued role with the receivership as we wait for available grants to improve our water system. Currently, I buy five gallons of water for cooking and one case of water every week for drinking, and this is okay for me, because I am in the good health that I can carry this load. It is a very heavy load every time I go to carry that much water from the store to my car and then, you know, to my home. And I, you know, I have the resources and the transportation, but I think of the elderly in my community and those who don't have the resources or the transportation or the strength to get this water, and, you know, it's very important that we have good water, you know, for the babies and the elderly especially, who shouldn't be drinking this water. And so, we would really appreciate your continued role with the receivership, and I'd like to add also that my family has been in Seville for three generations, and we have always made it a point to pay our water bill. So there are those who have, you know, for years, and it's sad that, you know, that those who haven't, you know, would influence your vote, and I can understand that, but I hope you would consider your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue?
My name is Mark Estrada, and I'm here as part of Representative of Yetum. I live at 143667384. And I would just like to say that, you know, I realize that the county, you know, has to go in the hole on this water system, but I could see where people would be more willing to pay for a product that was usable. If you got a bill for, you know, $60 every month for something that you couldn't use, you wouldn't be too happy. People are not going to pay for something that, if you go in the shower, it burns your skin and you can't drink it. I mean, and, you know, who knows? It might even be bad for your garden. There's been quite a bit of interest in the CSD and in the community of Yetum, and our system is pretty good, as I say, but, you know, like my father, he paid over $60,000 to have the sewer system and the pipes put in to our labor camp that we have out there. And, but anyway, like I said, what I just want to say, it's a win-win situation for the county. You get shut-off valves, you'll be able to shut people off if they don't pay their bill, and people are going to want to pay their bill if they get something they can use. That's all I have to say.
Hello, this is, my name's Laurel Firestone with the Community Water Center. I wanted to say thank you to the county for stepping up and helping this community in, for the past, you know, almost two years as a receiver, and particularly, I think, Britt and RMA for really helping to move this forward in terms of accessing funding. I think we all, I know at the Community Water Center, we're very committed to continuing to work with the county and Self-Help Enterprises and Department of Public Health and USDA to make sure that this community can get the resources it needs to solve this problem, and not only, and not only create something in the short term, but also make sure that we have a governance structure that is going to work for the community and for the county and for the long term. So, I guess I wanted to also say, Becky Quintana, also from Seville was, and from the community group there was, wanted, was here this morning, had to leave early, but wanted to say that she hopes that you all will support extending this for the next two years. And I think the bottom line here is that, you know, we've come to this point, there's been a lot of bumps in the road, particularly with funding, and I think this is, this is the opportunity for the county to help make sure that we can see this through to the end and get, actually take advantage of the funding that's there. If the county doesn't do this, the community is not able to get the funding it needs to fix its distribution system and its new source at least any time in the near future, and I think we need to take advantage of this opportunity to, as both Supervisor Worthley and Supervisor Vanderpool said, take advantage of the fact that there are grants going somewhere, and really, they should be coming to this county and to the communities that need it most, and certainly, Seville is one of those. And we'll continue to work with you, and we hope that you all continue to work with us in the community and help this move forward. So, thank you.
My name is Mason Guegels, and I'm from Visalia. I'm a student at Valley Oak, and I wanted to speak on this matter about Seville, because my grandpa lives there. I've gone to his house a plenty of times. He's had this house for more than I've been born. He's had it for about 15 years, been dealing with these water problems since then, and it's not good for him, for us, for the family. We can't drink the water there. He can't drink the water there. It's bad, just, it's bad water. I mean, you want to make Kool-Aid? You can't do that. You have bad water. When we go there, we always tend to think about that water, because water, to me as a person, water is one of the most important things in this world. Some people, they go around living with it, they don't think much about it. Water is everywhere. Water is life. Water, it's anything, you can relate to anything. When you go for a religion, any baptism, they baptize with water. People like to swim, they swim with water. People who live, they live with water. This world commonly made up of water, and I think that we need to continue helping Seville, because they need the water.
Hi, I'm Bruce Limmick with Self-Help Enterprises, and I wanted to also reiterate what Laurel had said, that we're committed to helping the community of Seville and working with the county until, you know, some kind of resolution is reached.
Okay.
Chairman, I would move approval of the recommendation that would extend our receivership for an additional two-year period.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Worthley?
And I will second that motion. I just want to reiterate that we're looking for a long-term solution that's not going to take a long time, so let's make sure that we continue to work with Self-Help and the other interested parties, the community and the Community Water Center, to make sure that we find some sort of governance structure and long-term solution in a quick matter.
Okay. I'll second. By Supervisor Vanderpool, let's cast our votes. We have three, four, and one against. Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Very much. County Council, we have need for closed session?
I think we have an addendum item.
We do have need for closed session. We do not, we no longer need Item A, which dealt with the Seville water system. We do have Items B, C, D, E, and F as listed on your agenda.
Okay. Thank you. And we will adjourn to closed session.
We have an addendum item.
Do we not have an addendum item?
Yeah, we have an addendum item.
It's not a closed session?
It's untimed.
It's closed session?
No.
There was another agenda item.
No. Item's not timed. It's an item not timed.
Yeah. See, I asked. It's just an addendum item?
It's an addendum item, number one.
Okay. Back in session. We will now go with Addendum Item Number One.
Good afternoon. Debbie Vaughn, Tulare County Administrative Office. The addendum item, as you are all aware, the redistricting process has, and California has a 14-member commission that is currently traveling around soliciting input from different communities and communities. and community members on how they would like to see the redistricting process take place. And the recommendation is that Tulare County submit a letter to that commission requesting that, as much as possible, the redistricting lines be drawn, so that our county remains as undivided, or as much of a whole as possible, so that we have representation in the State Assembly, the Senate, and the congressional districts, that is able to advocate and work for Tulare County, and the needs that we have in our community. So, the request is simply that the board send a letter requesting this objective to the redistricting committee. The intention, if supported by the board, is to send the letter. The committee is meeting in Bakersfield tonight, and in Hanford next week, so it is possible that should one of the board members use to also hand-deliver a letter, that's an option also.
Mr. Chair, just to make a comment, you know, I understand that there is a benefit of having a little bit of the county represented by different legislators, but to the fullest extent possible, we receive a large, large benefit from having our county represented by solely one legislator, like we have currently with a congressman, and also one assembly person, and the majority of their district's population rests in Tulare County, and so they don't overlook us. They represent us the best way that they can, and I think it's very important that we support this letter, and we send this letter and deliver this letter, so that we are maintained as a whole, to the fullest extent possible going forward, as a result of this most recent census. So, with that, I would move approval of the side.
Supervisor Cox, would you like to comment on it?
Before we vote, I'll ask Supervisor Worthley, he seems to be the one I think would have the most knowledge on this, looking at how we've been represented assembly-wise. Has it been beneficial or detrimental to have two assembly folks represent us at the state capitol, or would it be more beneficial to have one?
Well, I think, I think that the way that the wording is, is appropriate, because it is helpful to have more than one. I think the purpose here is to have the majority of the county have one person. So, this is like their focus, if you will. Their focused attention is on our county, as opposed to having it split up in three different ways, and we, and so they have interest someplace else. But it is beneficial to have part of our county represented by other people, especially in our partisan politics, where we, as currently the situation has been for a number of years, we have a Republican member in the county as a whole, but then in a portion of it, we have, which is tied to adjoining county, we have a Democratic person. So, we have both sides of the aisle covered, if you will. And I think that's been beneficial overall to us.
That's not what this says, though.
Well, I think, if we wanted to tweak the language a little bit, I think you could say, maybe try to maintain the status quo, because basically, that's what we have now. The system where we have the vast majority of the district is represented by one assembly member, but we have a portion of it represented by another.
The last paragraph doesn't say that, though.
Well, and to the fullest extent possible, yeah, I think that takes care of what you're saying, with having the majority of our county be represented by one. Currently, we have four. We have, there's a little bit of, I mean, Assemblyman Valadeo, Assemblywoman, Haldorwoman, or Halderman, and then we also have...
Halderman apparently represents the real estate without anybody in it again.
But my point is, is we have access with having four, but we get the majority of the attention that Assemblywoman Conway can give, because she relies upon our population, she resides in our population.
I think the danger that maybe that Mr. Cox was pointing out, is that when you say "to the fullest extent possible," well, it is possible that the entire county, one hundred percent, would be represented by one person. That is the fullest extent possible, because we don't have enough, you know, you could put all of our population in it, and then still have to have some additional votes from people someplace else to create that district. So, that's the fullest extent possible. I think, I know what you're trying to say, is that we want to avoid the situation being carved up, as some counties have been, where they don't have anybody feeling they're really responsible for, like their vote, their job does not rely upon the voters at Tulare County, or their particular county. Instead, they may be, this has been a big problem in the Bay Area, where you have, some of those internal counties have been gerrymandered in such a way as that there's a majority of people from the Bay Area, and a minority of people in the interior, and so who gets the real attention? And I think that's the purpose of your letter, and I think that is a good one for us to have. But the language, "to the fullest extent possible," does, within it, in my mind reading of it, would say that our goal would be to have as much of Tulare County in one person's district as possible. That could be a hundred percent. And I don't know that we really want to go that far. That's my only point. So, maybe there's a way of tweaking it a little bit to indicate what we're talking about here today.
How about if we...
How would you reword that?
How about if we just delete that paragraph?
To the fullest extent possible. Well, I think you still want to...
We have to make a request. So, we, the letter has to request something.
You know, I think you could say something to the extent of, you know, that we prefer that Tulare County be primarily represented by a single, you know, district, or something of that nature, which basically is what we have now. I mean, in fact, you could even use the word "status quo," or something akin to that. Because I do think we are served well by having Connie Conway as our assembly member, and she is from Tulare County, and more likely in the future will be a Tulare County person. I mean, there's always a benefit to having the hometown person be able to be your representative. That's what we're trying to protect.
Your last two paragraphs say the same thing, that you do not divide Tulare County. So, at this point, I would give direction to staff to change those last two paragraphs to...
Tori?
And you said it better than I could, Supervisor Worthley, about either maintaining the status quo, or ensuring that we can be held whole as much as possible, or to the fullest extent possible. I agree, having four is too many, although one of them just has dirt.
No bugs.
You know, but this draws a really hard line, that you thought was probably going to be a whole lot easier than this. After having read it this morning, I just, I don't know that, you know, we want to say that, if you say it's been beneficial to have that, you know, that dual representation there.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I think all we need to do is just add maybe a sentence or a line in here somewhere that says, maintaining a similar scenario as we have currently, or the status quo. And then that would kind of give the direction to the commission, that we like the way that it is, we want to have the majority of our county be represented by one person. So, I think something like that would be sufficient.
Debbie?
And Debbie, I would include that in my motion to approve this letter, to include a line in there that mentions that we like the status quo, or something to that effect, that we're currently, the way we're currently represented. So, yeah, that would be my motion.
Is it possible, I'll look at our clerk, just to make a motion to approve a letter to be drafted by staff, approved by the chairman?
Yes.
Can we just do it that way, instead of trying to wordsmith it right here?
Yep, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Cox.
No.
Vanderpoel. Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Worthley. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll take the opportunity to announce there will be no reports out for closed session.
Okay, we will adjourn to closed session.